Hi.
You can't see all.
Brian hasn't come in yet. Stuart's still connecting to audio. Hang on, I can't hear you.
Okay, he has to unmute. What's going on?
Does he need to unmute himself?
I think he's muted on his end.
Are you, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I can. There we go.
Should I speak English or Spanish or Hebrew?
You're such a Renaissance man, Stuart.
Brian, we can't see you.
That's a good game.
Camera's off.
You could see my kitty and part of me, right?
Yes.
I can't.
Yeah.
Kitty's very cute.
That's Ernie. He's a rescue.
Oh, look, the video. There's like a, it's a picture, but let me see. It might be...
I don't have my video on.
Oh, maybe then I won't be able to see anything.
So you just see my picture. Do you need to see my face?
I don't think so. Is there a little bit?
Ashley, how are you?
Good.
How are you, Brian?
Living the dream yourself.
Trying. Rolling with the punches.
Yep.
Maybe it's because he doesn't have...
So Stuart, how many languages do you actually speak?
One.
One? That's one more than I do. Have to really work on English.
Hey, Brian.
Yes, sir.
You know who Carlton the doorman was?
I'm sorry?
I'm dating myself. Do you remember the Mary Tyler Moore Show?
I do remember that vaguely.
Do you remember Rhoda and Carlton the doorman?
Was he the White House doorman too?
Whenever someone was ringing up into Rhoda's apartment, I think, or Mary's apartment, you never saw the guy, but there's always this voice saying, Carlton the doorman. You sound like Carlton the doorman.
I do.
You could do voiceovers.
I'm gonna take that as a compliment, so.
He's doing a voiceover now. I thought it was the cat.
We are just getting out of self-imposed isolation within our house after about two and a half months because Rebecca had the virus and then I had to travel twice for my mom. And so it's been, yeah, this is, this is the first day right about now that we get to share space together.
Well, that's wonderful. Glad to hear it.
Yeah.
It's been a long couple of months.
Heard that from quite a few people that I've talked to. Congratulations are in order. Back together.
Made our relationship stronger.
Distance makes the heart grow strong.
Absence makes the heart something.
This year, you saw that. But we don't have Peter yet.
Connor, how are you doing?
I'm doing very well, actually. I've been very productive in my home. I have accomplished a lot of work around the house, but also luckily, very luckily, I have been working remotely with Markertech. So I've been pretty largely unaffected, a minor hours reduction, but it's good stuff. I've been very lucky.
Very grateful. So good to hear that.
Super, super grateful.
Mitch, we're waiting for our chair to get on.
Okay, no worries.
I'm actually planning a guitar as we prepare to start the meeting, which I will put down as soon as we do.
Planning a guitar. Oh, look at that.
Who's cat?
I'm the cat.
Oh, Brian.
Hey, John. How are you? Mr. Lavelle, it's good to hear your voice and see your hand waving.
Ah, gallery view.
Hi, John. We're waiting for our chair to start the meeting.
Here is in a car.
Are we supposed to mute ourselves when we're not talking?
It's good form, which I said unmuted.
I'm going to mute.
The only thing we don't have is a deaf interpreter.
I'll work on getting us a closed caption encoder from Markertech.
I know the alphabet. That's about it.
And an Espanol.
Melissa, are we expecting Peter? You in touch with him?
Yes, we are. And Judith and James. I didn't, oh, I see Judy.
Robin, where are you?
Maybe she...
You're muted.
Just, just north of DC.
Oh, you made good time today.
Lot of rain. Happy birthday, Melissa.
Thanks, Robin. That was sweet of you. Thank you.
Well, happy birthday.
To birthday.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
Thanks, guys. That was awesome.
That was easily the most uncoordinated birthday song of all time.
We're gonna let the world think that we start a whole meeting this way.
Stand on a high note.
All cameos.
Brian on here. Oh, there's Judy. Okay, I see. But there's a second screen. Okay.
You got a command center in your house over there, John?
A what?
A command center. Three or four monitors?
One older iPad. That's all. But it switches some of the screens.
I felt like a supervillain ever since I brought my work computer home. I have, I think, a total of eight monitors, including this iPad, in my office now. It's a little crazy.
That's a little overwhelming.
Hello, fellow board members who I haven't seen in months now.
Having trouble with audio, video. Can you hear us?
That sounds like, I do hear you, Laurel. It's Melissa. I hear you, but I don't see you.
Are they going? You might be doing audio today, Peter.
Hey, Peter.
Hi, hi, everybody.
I don't know.
Well, it is seven o'clock.
Hi, Peter.
Hi, everyone. And I believe we have a quorum from what I can see. So... All right. So I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting. Woodstock planning board meeting of the 22nd.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first. And we basically have two items on our agenda. One of them is a minor lot line revision for Berg, and the other is a subdivision in a 1.5 acre zoning.
Can we do Mitch first? He has a prior commitment to teach and he's in Australia.
Right. Now, Bill was gonna join us. Is he with us now?
I am, Peter, but I'm happy to wait. Take care of business first and then we can talk.
Well, I was gonna let you, I was gonna tell the board that you had some stuff to talk to us about Selena, and I was gonna let you have that first if you want.
No, I'm happy to wait. Go ahead and do your other meetings.
Okay. So the first one is the Berg subdivision. I'm sorry, the Dirkoff subdivision, which is a 1.85 acre lot, which he wants to subdivide 1.5 acres out because that's the zoning, and that leaves him with .35 acres, which is in the 1.5 acre zoning. So the, I read the codes and the codes say that if you have sewer and water, you can have a higher density in the 1.5, but I don't, haven't seen where it says that we can create a lot, create a new lot in the 1.5 zone. So if someone can help me on that, how we can create a .35 acre lot in a 1.5 acre zone.
Who would typically help with that?
I mean, I saw Teresa's notes that said that with sewer and water, you can have a lot that is 15,000 square feet. And a .35 acre lot is just under 15,000 square feet. But that's if you have sewer and water, but I don't quite see where we can create a lot that's .35 acres.
Because it's not pre-existing, right?
Right. We're gonna be creating it. It's a great thing to do. I think we should have small lots in town, but I don't know how we can do it.
Peter, is this lot on Glasgow Turnpike?
It's off of Lower Birdcliff.
No, it's at Lower Birdcliff, next to the old Berg property.
No, this isn't the Berg one. This is the Dick Carf one, which is off of Wiley Lane.
For an item one.
Yeah. It's off of Wiley Lane, which is off of Lower Birdcliff. And the property is on both sides of Wiley Lane. So what it is, is there's a house on the property that he wants to subdivide out with 1.5 acres, which is correct, that's the code, and he wants to keep a cabin on the remaining .35. Now, the setbacks, because it's such a small lot, are 25, 25, 50, I believe, or 25, 15, 25. Now, whether it's, all the buildings exist, so he's not building anything anymore. So I don't know whether the setbacks are gonna be an issue, but the only issue I can see is can we create a lot, a new lot, in a 1.5 acre zone that's only .35 acres?
Wow. .35 is smaller than my house.
Yeah, it's just under 15,000 square feet, which is the minimum that we can create, that it can be. As I said, Teresa's notes say with central sewer and water. And I did see in the code that, that, that it's in 260-26 and under modified yards, that if it's less than the 1.5 acres, you can increase the density. But I don't see where we can create a lot. So that's the question I have on that one.
Peter, if the lot is undersized and if the answer to your question is that they can't do it, can he then go to the zoning board for variance of that provision?
Right.
That's what I would think.
That's one question. And then the other is, why can't, if it's substandard, wouldn't that just mean that you can't build on it?
It's already got the buildings on it. On the one side is the house that he wants to subdivide the 1.5 acres to. The other side is a small cottage that exists that he wants to keep for himself. So there's no new construction proposed, just a subdivision.
In other words, if the prop, if the smaller piece that he wants to create is vacant, can't somebody do that as a buffer? They still have to meet some minimum size requirement? Just trying to get an understanding here.
Yeah. I mean, the way the zoning code reads is if it was an existing lot of .35 acres, then yes, then we could, then we can, you know, you could build on it. But it's not existing. We're gonna be creating it. And the other thing the code says is that the planning board can create a lot of lesser size than the zone is, but it has to be attached to another lot, which this isn't the case, so, since this is a subdivision. So I scanned the codes all day and I could not find where we could create an undersized lot.
But how is it not attached to another lot?
Because he's separating them.
It is now.
It is. It's all one lot now, right.
Yeah, I'm looking at it on the map and it's right on Glasgow Turnpike, right?
Well, it's off of Lower Birdcliff. On Wiley Lane. Twenty-seven...
Seven point nine.
Twenty-seven point nine dash three dash forty.
Forty-five.
What's the actual address?
Seven Wiley Lane.
Okay.
Wait a minute. I thought it was 271117110.
We're on item one, Judith, not on item two.
Oh, the other one. Mitch.
Section block lot 27.9-3-45.
All right, I got it. I just have to go to it.
So I guess my question is, and this is Brian, is if there's not precedent for doing this...
I've got the wrong thing.
Can we do it? And then if we do do it, does it set a precedent that would be problematic?
Well, as far as I know, we can't create, can't create an undersized lot in the zone.
So if we don't have jurisdiction to do that and we want to do this, who would?
It seems to me it's gotta be the zoning board of appeal.
I would think.
I was saying earlier, just a variance. I mean, right? That's what this is for.
I don't know under what, how they could claim hardship for it, but it's certainly worth a try.
I don't have the right thing, but not that it matters because you can't look at it anyway. I've got 27 dot nine dash three dash forty-five. It's on Wiley Lane.
Yeah.
That is it?
And the lane goes right through the middle of the lot.
Okay, all right. So there's a triangular, there's a triangular shaped one? Yeah.
Right. So the issue is that I don't have the survey of it. So beside the part that's on the other side, I don't know if that is 1.5 acres or whether he has to include some of the triangular shape to make it 1.5.
It's 1.85 according to the county parcel map for the two combined.
Right.
And I'm just eyeballing it. It does not look, it looks like it's more than half of the other one.
Right.
But I'm not a surveyor and this is just, you know, a piece. I can't really, without dividing it and doing more monkeying around with the computer than I am ready to do right now.
So since I don't know whether he has 1.5 acres on the other side of Wiley Lane and if he has to include some of the triangular shape, then that lot line division may be close to buildings without, you know, the setbacks are 25, 15, 25. So we'd have to see that. And I guess this is a preliminary, preliminary sketch review. So he wants to know if it's possible. And without a survey showing what those lines would look like, I don't know how we can go forward with it other than to have him go to the ZBA.
That's how I feel.
Mitch, are you on, is Mitch on my line?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Have you spoken with the surveyor or is that within your contemplation or not?
Not yet. I wanted to have this meeting first to see if it made sense to even do that.
Yeah.
You're dividing up the triangular piece into a smaller piece?
The cottage, the cottage part of the property I want to keep and that little parcel of land in front of it, that's in, you know, comes with the cottage, would be the .35 acres and then the rest, 1.5, would be included with the sale of the house and the other property.
So it's part of the triangular piece, but not all of it?
Well, I don't know how to answer that question. Whatever, whatever part of that property I need to have to have the .35, I would keep and the 1.5, which I know is the code for the area. So I'd be honoring the 1.5, sell the rest of the property.
Got it. Got it. And Matt, you're gonna sell the side with the pool?
Yes, sell the side with the pool and sell the big house and all the land in front of the house and just keep the cottage with a little parcel of land in front of the cottage. So the rest of the property is 1.5 acres that's sold to the owner of the new house.
I can't see very clearly. It looks like there's a house across, on the smaller, on the triangular piece too. Is that the cottage or is...
Yes, that's the cottage.
Okay.
That's what I would be wanting to own myself, my wife and I. And we would sell the big house and the rest of the property because we just don't need it anymore.
So I guess my question is, when you take out the 1.5 acres from the entire piece, is it all on one side of the road or does it include part on the other side of the road?
Both. It includes both. There's the land across the street, which has the pool house and the pool, which is non-functioning, but there's the pool there. And then in front of it...
On the other side of the road?
I don't know exactly.
Okay.
I don't know. And then the house, of course, has lawn in front of it and, you know, the property in front of it as well. So there's some, the combination of across the street and the land in front of the house would be the 1.5 acres and the remaining part of the parcel would be for the cottage.
Well, board, as I say, unless somebody can see something in the zoning code that I've missed, I think the only option is the ZBA.
Really?
That's the zoning, the zoning variance process?
The board, yeah, yeah, asking for a variance to create a smaller sized lot.
Okay.
To be honest with you, I would suggest you consider asking them to have one side of the road be one lot and the other side be the other lot because at least it's unified. And they're both, they're both under the size, but not by as much.
Well, Judy, I mean, from my point of view, that wouldn't work because the dwelling that I want to live in is on the same side of the road as the house. The other side of the land, it just has a very funky pool house and nothing else.
I can't see the building you want to live in. It's up in the corner?
Yeah. If you're, it's on, it's next to the house. There's the big house and then next to it, there's a little cottage, 850 square feet or so. That's, and it's already built. I already lived there. I just want to be able to section off the property so I could keep that as my residence, my wife and I.
Given the inaccuracies of the map that I have, because the county parcels never fall in the right place, I really can't see where what is very well, so.
Okay.
So the question is, if you have a survey of it and if the surveyor makes that 1.5 acre subdivision, that line has to be shown so that we know how close the buildings are to it and septic and, well, of course, you have, you don't have septic uptown sewers, so that's not the issue. Of course, and I see that in your letter, you'd have to get new tank, new septic tank and water hookup.
Yeah.
So the question is where that line would be. And you'd need, actually, if you go to the ZBA, you'd have to show them that also so that they would see it.
The wat, the water hookup line?
Well, the most important part is where the subdivision line would be.
Yeah.
And related to buildings.
We need it and they need it.
So is that, for me, is that another, is that another meeting with the zoning board folks?
You would, you would have to request a hearing with the ZBA, correct?
And how does he get there? I think he's asking, how does he get from us to the ZBA?
Two ways, but he can basically just apply to the ZBA for a hearing.
For a variance?
I can send you email with information to get in touch with Mitch.
Mike, I have a question. The question is, what variance, Peter, is he applying for? Undersized lot?
Yeah, it would be an undersized lot.
Yeah, well, the reason that they stated in that original thing that 15,000 would be sufficient was because we did put water and sewer in that on Wiley Lane 40 years ago now. But it's there and the reason was to accommodate smaller lots.
Right, but the way I read the code is it says if it was an existing lot, less than 1.5 acres, and it was at least 15,000 square feet, then you could develop it. But I don't see where we can create a .35 acre lot. If it existed already, then, and it was over 15,000 square feet, then according to the code, it's developable.
Well, you know, the other variable here, folks, is I'm not developing anything. It already exists. I'm not building anything.
Right, so we're creating a lot that's, we would be creating a lot that's undersized in the zoning district. And I don't know, we don't know how you do that.
I suppose the zoning board, the question from their perspective might be, to what extent do they want these smaller lots to proliferate as opposed to covering in the smaller lots that existed at the time that the water was hooked up?
Well, that's a good point and it's an exact point because it's actually in the comp plan. We actually do want to have some smaller lots.
Yeah.
Desirable.
And the building's already there.
The effort was to allow them, not to discourage them.
Right, right.
And, I mean, the water went in in the late 40s, 1947, 48, it went in on that neighborhood. And the sewer was put in in that neighborhood about 1981. And the whole idea was to allow smaller lots. So I don't have a problem with this one at all. And if Mitch has to jump through a hoop here and get ZBA approval, what is he asking the ZBA for? Undersized lot creation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, creating an undersized lot. Which, which, you know, we basically are encouraging in the comp plan.
I would argue he's not creating it.
He's creating the lot.
In the act of subdivision.
Well, that's...
These arguments.
And John?
Yes?
Yeah, just wanted to ask John a question. It's my understanding, and I don't know this for a fact, that there are precedents for it in the, in the neighborhood of the area where my house is, that there are so-called undersized lots. So I wouldn't be the first, I don't think, to have a smaller than 1.5 acre parcel.
No, but the code does give a date and I believe it was... No, but the code does give a date and I believe it was 2001 or there was a date that said prior, any lot created prior to that was, but we haven't created any after that. So any undersized lots that pre-existed still are okay.
What about if we, if we wrote a resolution supporting his application for the zoning board?
I'm in favor of that.
Judy, you're my, Judy, you're my new hero. Thank you.
I think it would be in order, especially since it's in line with the comp plan.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. And actually it would, Len, wait, if we were to point that out, point out, point out that it's in line with the comp plan. I think that's an important point.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
All right then, well, let's. Yeah.
I, I move we resolve to write the planning, the zoning board of appeal indicating our support for the applicant having the right to subdivide that property to accommodate the existing building and hook it up to the sewer and water because it's, it's the comprehensive plan.
There might be additional worded saying that there would be no additional building.
Right.
Right.
Just going to say that it would have to, our resolution would have to say the building exists. Because we can't, we create a tiny lot and then build on it. So.
Okay.
And just, just so that you know, I have zero interest in building anything. I'm trying to downsize and simplify my life, not add to it.
Right. But, but 10 years from now, it could be sold, you know, theoretically and then the next owner
Yeah.
might take action at odds with what we're talking about. So.
Yeah, exactly.
Good point.
Yeah.
Hopefully you'll be there for a long, long time.
I don't think I got.
Unless you're moving to Australia.
I'll second it.
I'm here working with a client now. And I got, and I got sort of stuck here when the whole coronavirus thing happened. So.
Yeah.
Brian seconded if anyone, if, no one heard that.
All in favor?
Aye.
We can refer it to the ZBA. I'll work on a memo and get some input from you guys. Okay?
Thanks. Really appreciate it, everybody. Thank you for all your insight and openness. I appreciate it.
You have a good one.
Stay safe.
You too. Bye bye, everybody.
Bye.
Okay, folks. The next item on the agenda is the Berg lot line revision. And basically what's happening is that on the one lot, there's the house and they always thought in the backyard was theirs. And they went to go sell the lot and discovered through the survey that the lot, the area behind their house was not theirs. So they've proposed a lot line revision to just include that area behind the house in, in the, in the lot. And it's a very tiny, tiny lot line revision. I think it was 0.04 acres or something. Yeah, it's tiny.
It's measurable in square yards.
Right. And it doesn't involve any other properties. It's between the two properties, the Berg property. So it doesn't involve any other neighbors. Nobody else is affected. So I looked in the book and I came up with, we believe we've used this before, one of Paul's favorites, which is 260-75C1, which is under Sketch Plan Conference. If it, if it is minor in scope.
In scope, yes.
Certainly quite minor in scope. And I believe we can waive further review under that revision. And you know, the, the question was, the original question that the attorney asked me was whether they had to resurvey the whole thing to submit it to the county. And the answer was no, that the county will accept the, um, the map as it's shown. So that they don't need to survey both lots.
Is anyone present on this review?
Yes, that, that's me. I'm the, the land surveyor on, on the project.
What's your name, sir?
John Heidecker.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Well, John, maybe you can, I didn't know you were there. Maybe you can explain it a little better than I did. You probably know the exact area being.
You exactly, you explained it perfectly. They, you know, there was kind of a surprise to the current or to the, to the former owner. The, the house is since transferred to a new owner. And, um, you know, they, they basically bought it with the condition that they would be able to go through with this lot line. A deal has been made with the Berg owner, owner of the Berg property and, you know, pending your, your approval, uh, you know, it, it would, it would be a done deal. And they basically have the backyard area they thought they were, they were originally looking at when they were purchasing the home. There's really not, not, not too much to, to tell here. It's a fair, fairly straightforward, I think.
This certainly sounds like it.
Well, um, I therefore would suggest that under 260-75C1, that it is minor in scope and we can waive further review.
Second.
All in favor?
Who said?
Connor did.
Thank you.
Aye.
Okay. All right. One other thing, uh, just to mention, uh, about your favorite subjects, which is the STRs. And I don't know if you all know, but Melissa is down to two days a week. And at this point could not schedule and put together, um, public hearings.
What a shame.
Us reviewing the R because all we do is, is appoint a public hearing. And if we're not going to have a public hearing, then that's where we stand on those. Is that true, Melissa? Is that how we?
Yeah, I'm just kind of putting them on hold.
Right.
With the scheduling, you know, yeah, you know, there's the mailing, there's everything. It's, it's a lot into that. So I've just kind of set them back and we'll pick back up when things get a little bit back normal. If it's okay with you guys.
Oh, yeah. Has the town restricted, um, short-term rentals? Not granting the approval, but actual, you know,
They have.
Bringing people in?
They've restricted them. Just, it was a headline this week. Yeah. That's what Bill's going to talk about tonight, I think.
Okay.
So, uh,
Right now, I can, just to piggyback off that, um, I haven't, I don't have anything scheduled for the first meeting in June just because it's, it's not quiet, but it's nothing pertinent that you guys really need to meet on. Like, I feel like the whole world's kind of just.
Stopped.
So, yes. And I'll let you know definitely like the beginning of next week. Um, but I'm going with, we're not going to have a meeting the first of July and then, I mean, June. And then I will look at the following meeting and see if I can bring anything back to the table and see how things kind of roll out if you guys all are good with that.
Melissa, can I ask a question? Do you have a number of like the amount of, uh, applications for Airbnbs that have not come to us yet?
I, I do. Um, gosh, I had that together at the last meeting and I don't with this one.
I'm asking this because of the change.
I can't, I can't give you an exact, but I know like in our office, in the planning board office, I believe there's 20, 20 something public hearings to be rescheduled so that there, those we've already seen for the sketch plan reviews. And then, I don't know, there's a stack of files probably about yay big that we still have to see.
Okay. Cause that kind of affects what the town just decided about the change.
But if they've already went through the building department, my understanding is they've been accounted for.
Okay.
So if I have, if they've had an inspection, they're, they've already been accounted for because that number should have came from the building department.
So the second an application comes in, it's, uh, that's counted in what you're having.
Right.
Okay. Um, well, uh, at this point, I think I'll turn it over to Bill. He wants to talk about Selena to the board.
Hey, guys.
Hey, Bill.
Sorry, we'll address the STRs for a moment. It's our understanding from the building department that there are 247 or 48 that are either approved or in the pipeline somewhere in their office or in your office. So last, uh, this past Tuesday, the town board did, uh, lower the cap to 275, which gives cushion for about another 25, 26, somewhere in there. And what, I had a, a chat with Melissa the other day, you know, it's our feeling. These have all been operating for a long time. I've told you guys this and there's, you know, there's no rush on the town board's part to, for you to finish them up. You take your time, you do them when you can and don't sweat them. If they have to sit there for a while, they're operating anyway. It's, it's not like people are sitting chomping at the bit to get them, get them up and running. So did you have any other questions about the STRs?
No.
Nope.
So the other thing I just wanted to bring you up to date on, uh, the town board did meet with, we had our attorney, although he couldn't get his camera turned on, he was at the meeting and we had, uh, an attorney from Selena's come. Uh, I, there's been discussion on and off about, um, some type of MOU, a memorandum of understanding to, uh, permit them to start to operate on some limited basis. Quite frankly, I, I don't know why they're stuck on this because technically the entire place was never shut down. They did receive a, a stop work order. There was, there were some building permits that were issued last year, which should not have been. The ZBA made a ruling that they were not issued properly. So there's two or three buildings where work was commenced, has not been finished. And so those buildings are not C of O'd. Uh, and the stop work order was to stop working on those actual buildings. They still have, I think it's about 14 units that are grandfathered in, that have been permitted, that are C of O'd. And technically really could be leased out. I think the town board is taking the position, we're kind of happy that they're taking this stance that they want to enter into an MOU because it gives the town more, um, leverage over them to make sure that they operate in, in a, a sense that's going to be more pleasant for the property owners, uh, the adjacent property owners. So, you know, we, we, we haven't told them, yeah, go ahead and just operate. We've said, yeah, we'll, we'll entertain this, uh, MOU. The MOU, if the town board does enter into it with them, would only allow them a limited operation. I can actually, I'll, I'll send to Melissa tomorrow the, the latest document. And it would not sidetrack the planning board. Part of the agreement in the MOU is that they continue to move forward with their site plan review. So, um, you know, and the MOU, if we did this, it would be for a three or four month period. It would be short-term. We would make it so that it was renewable as long as the town felt that we were making, uh, progress with their site plan. So that's about it.
Bill?
Robin was at the meeting. She's one of the contiguous neighbors and somebody that I rely on, um, you know, just for feedback and information. So do, does anybody have any questions at this point?
Well, I, I think the, the, the first question, Bill, is that, um, you know, they were under site plan review with the planning board.
Correct.
One of our understandings, memorandums of understandings was that to go forward, that they needed to get the engineering started to hook up to the town sewer system and to apply to the town board to go into the sewer district.
Correct.
And I don't know that they've done anything in that direction.
I, and somehow I lost you all, but, um, I can hear you. It's my understanding from their architect that they, they are working to that end. They have approached me as supervisor to discuss, you know, how, where the town board would be. And, you know, in, in talking to the town board, everybody seems, um, to think that it would be a benefit to everyone, neighbors, to them, to the town. So there's, there's no, um, I don't think there's any disagreement on the town's part. They also, they did, um, they did have a brief conversation with Dennis Larios, Bernier Larios, the town's engineer. And, and I think initially there was some talk about doing water and sewer. Everybody seemed to kind of back off the water. It, it's a little too costly. It, it was a difficult tie-in. The town engineer didn't think it was in the best interest. The water, uh, sewer water, um, maintenance department didn't feel that it was in the best interest. So we've kind of backed off on that. And if they improve their sewer situation, they do have ample water out there. So. And again, that, the, the MOU would put as a condition that they continue to move in that direction.
Now. Is there any sort of time constraint on that? Because I mean, that's sort of my concern is like, you said it's non-renewable, right? Is that just a blanket non-renewable or are they going to come back and say, oh, well, we haven't actually made too many strides, but here's a somewhat, again, a somewhat incomplete site plan that we still have disagreements about. Can we renew?
But yeah, we, we would make it renewable. It, we would put, we would, we would have the understanding that it would be good for three or four months and put a condition that it could be renewed as long as everybody thought everybody was being upfront and moving in a proper direction.
Okay. So the last, or not the last, but one of the main questions the board had on this whole project was the sewer. And if, if the restaurant and, and bar and everything is the one that needs to get hooked into the system, the buildings, the cottages you're talking about letting them open, do they have proper sewers?
They all have pre-existing sewers, um, which are, you know, technically grandfathered in and they can continue to use them. But at some point we would like to see the entire thing hooked in, not just the restaurant, but the, all the rooms that are there. And, you know, to date I've heard no pushback from them. You know, we, we, I even said at the beginning, this is a $500,000 to $600,000 project. And they didn't bat an eye. And their engineers told them the same thing and the town engineers told them the same thing. And so far they, they still maintain that they, that that's their plan, that they want to hook into it. So, you know, listen, we've all been burned by the owners of this property before. So I, you know, I, I have to be a little cautious here, but they seem to be saying the right things. And, um, again, they, I think, were they to push this in court, I, I think that a, a court would permit them to open, partially open. That there's nothing, no action the town's taken to, to actually shut them down. We don't have grounds for that. So the fact that they're not fighting us on this and making a legal brouhaha, you know, to me indicates they're trying to, to be appropriate here and be good neighbors.
So then I guess the next question is, in, in this memorandum of understanding, when are they going to come back to the planning board to continue their site plan review?
I think they, they should be back before you guys. I mean, my understanding is that they're pulling together information. The last meeting I was at, I know that Jess there, Jess Walker, was on, on the, uh, the Zoom meeting, taking notes. And it's my understanding, talking to him a couple of days later, is that, you know, he's busy compiling and getting data and getting the engineer to try and pull this all together. So.
I have a question.
Yep.
They do want to operate the, the restaurant. Is that at the moment something they could still do? Like they could use the buildings that haven't been worked on?
Technically they're allowed, permitted to use the buildings that haven't been worked on. I don't know how much work was done on the restaurant. The other thing is, I mean, restaurants are up in the air right now as it is. So it, it, it certainly, when it came up in discussion the other night, it would not be run as a restaurant. You know, I think their hope at some point when the COVID issue lightens up a little bit, that they may be able to do some takeout for guests only. Robin, was that, is that your understanding? Guests only? Yeah. And, and that's, again, that's something that, that we could stipulate in the memorandum of understanding. Because, you know, I, well, go ahead, Judith. I'm sorry. I didn't get that.
That sounds reasonable.
I, I think it is. I mean, I, you know, I understand that, that this prod, this property has been, uh, not. I mean, I, you know, I understand that, that this prod, this property has been, uh, not bringing any income in for them for a while. And I think they're eager to start some cash flow. And I think they're willing to, to really work with the town to, to do it appropriately.
Well, they keep saying that.
Yeah. Michael Skirnik did at the beginning too, though, so that's why I'm.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, I, um, I'm always a little cautious at this point.
Quick question, though. What were the concerns on the water and sewer people regarding hooking them in on that water line? Since new water line does run up three seventy-five.
I'll, I'll see if I can get an answer for you, John. I don't, I don't have that answer.
Well, I think in the, we both, we've all heard that anytime there's a proposition that involves something to do with the water and sewer, they say no. I mean, it's just the way it is. At the, but an expansion of both is to the benefit of the town.
I agree.
And the benefit of them.
I agree. You know, the other thing is, you know, the, I know there's, once in a while it comes up, the fallacy or concern about, um, the, or the quantity of water. And, you know, the last study we had, I think we have four hundred percent reserve.
Yes.
We, we've got tremendous qualities of water. Now, what people don't get is that, you know, once in a while we'll, we'll have a dry season and we'll need to tamp down on water. We'll tell people not to water, water lawns and whatnot. Part of the reason is, is because the, the pumps are not set that deep. There, it is possible to drill the wells deeper. There's some risk involved. The deeper you go, the more likely you're to hit minerals or other elements that would need to be filtered out. So Bernier-Larrios always comes back and says, don't mess with it if you don't need to. You know, we just drilled another well, I think it's thirty-two feet deep to replace one of the wells that's filling in. Don't quote me on this, but I think it was a hundred gallons a minute is what it tested for over seventy-two hours. So that, you know, there's ample water and there's a whole other reservoir down below the existing reservoir. So the amount of water isn't an issue. I, I, I agree. I think they should hook up to it. Uh, I didn't have a lengthy conversation with Dennis, though. He just, for some reason, he seemed to feel sewer was good, water wasn't. But I'll, I'll try and get an answer for the board.
But sewer is more urgent in any case.
Absolutely.
Contaminated.
Yes. And I don't believe, and Robin, you can, you, you would know better than I, but I don't believe water, uh, has ever been an issue. When the restaurant and the motel was going, um, there seems to be ample water over there for everybody. I don't know that the neighbors' wells ever went dry, even in dry times.
I think you might want to check with, um, Homer.
Did he have a problem?
Yes, he did. I mean, I, I know that Homer's passed on, but maybe with his family.
Mm-hmm, I'll do, I'll do that.
He did have an issue with water.
Okay, thanks, Robin.
Well, isn't, isn't Homer the one that was closest property to the school, Robin?
Uh, you know, I don't, I forget which house was Homer's.
Homer was direct.
Whoops, we lost Robin.
You hit a dead zone, Rob.
Um, of the property, uphill.
Could you say again? Robin, we lost you.
I believe Homer's property is like by where the pool is.
Yeah.
Back that far. It's a couple of properties down.
Okay.
Bill, thanks for your update on this. This is Brian. What is your, uh, what's your gut tell you on this?
Um, you know, I'm in favor of it. I, I talked to them six months ago about it for a couple of reasons. One, again, I think really legally, they, there's nothing that's been done that actually closed those other fourteen units. The stop work order didn't affect it. The town hasn't, you know, the fact that they're in site plan doesn't preclude them from continuing to operate the existing business. So really, there, there's no legal reason for them to be closed. I, the only, and, and I don't, I don't talk about this a lot, only because I don't want them to just say, okay, we're going to go open. I want the MOU because I think it's going to give the town the upper hand. I, I think too, what happened was, you know, this corporation came in last year and they seemed to have good intentions. And I think, you know, they thought they bought an, an ongoing business and all of a sudden, excuse me, the, the S hit the fan and I, I think they were shell shocked. And I, I don't think they quite, I, I think it took them months before they even could figure out how to respond to it. They've got themselves, uh, a very well-respected attorney in Steve Barshoff, who's known to the town. He was the attorney that worked for the town to do the Como easement. So we, we've known Steve for a long time. He's, he's well-respected and, and, you know, so I think he's walking a tight line, doing what's right for his client, but also not wanting to, to do bad by a, a former client. So I, I, I feel pretty upbeat about this. I think that, one, they're allowed to do it. Two, if they have these restrictions and they, they don't comply, they've, they've now signed a document that says we will comply. So, you know, once they do that, it's going to be harder for them to argue, oh, no, we don't have to do that. Well, you're signed on the line that says you do. So, um.
Who's reviewing? Are you?
Rod will.
Okay.
So here's the thing, Bill. It seems to me that, I, I think the whole board agrees that, you know, we'd like to get this thing finished and get this thing done and going.
Amen.
Oh. Amen.
So if, we'd like them to get back before the board and get everything done that needs to be done. It seems like they have the financial capability to do it. So it, um, you know.
If, if you wouldn't mind if I just interject a little bit, it's just to say that, you know, that's the only thing. Everyone here wants to see it move forward, but we're all just a little puzzled at what is holding them back. You know, the things that we've been asking for are the same things that we asked, uh, well, I mean, not exactly the same at this point. Don't get me wrong, um, but, you know, it's the same thing that happened before. And I'm not saying it's going to, like you said, maybe they have good intentions. That's all fine. I don't want to cast aspersions or anything, but this is what happened with Michael. We got to a point where we had a couple of meetings. We had a couple disagreements, but it seemed like things were relatively amicable. And then all of a sudden we stopped hearing. So that's, that's the, so if, if I could express any concern about, and, and just a little reservation of the whole thing is just making sure that, you know, if we issue this temporary occupancy, that they, or, or MOU, whatever we're, however.
Whatever we're calling it.
Yeah, that there's a means by which, you know, that there's a standard to hold them to, to some extent of saying what, you know, if we can meet with them before it's issued, see where they're at and say, in order to have this renewed, we need X, Y, and Z complete. Not, you know, questioned on or anything. We, they can schedule more meetings between now and then to check up on it. But just to make sure that we actually, you know, let's, let's put, let's put some accountability into play.
So one thing I would be happy to do, you guys have a meeting on June eighth, Melissa?
Uh, the fourth.
The fourth?
Yep. I wasn't sure what we were going to do, but what, what you got?
Do, do you want to, you know, one of the things we could say is, uh, because the town board may have a special meeting next week or the week after, but I could make as a condition that they come back before you and give you an update, um, with it, not with Jess, but with their legal team and engineers and anyone else. And, and just give you guys an update as to where you, they are. To answer your question a little, Connor, I do know that, that back last year, the corporation was in the process of securing a substantial, um, uh, influx of capital. And at, at the last moment, I do know that that fell through. And while it didn't kill the company, I think it did put them on pause a little bit for them to refinance and, and, um.
And hey, and hey, that maybe, that maybe that's totally reasonable and everything, but we haven't exactly had like the super cleanest and open communication about it.
If I can jump in on that for a second. My question is that, uh, the applicant was pressing the last, uh, communications-wise with the, with the planning board, to get us to issue a temporary or support the issuance of a temporary, um, operating permission to allow them to operate. And what Bill is now saying is that they don't really need that, but you'd like to lead them under that impression so we can get the MOU done. And from my perspective, I don't see why we can't put a provision in the MOU requiring as a term of that agreement that they diligently pursue the site review process.
It would be, it would be, Stuart.
Yeah.
It would be a condition.
I, so I, I suppose my, my only question though, and it's not one that necessarily has to be answered today, really, is, you know, what that language will look like? What do we consider diligent and what is going to be the metric of, you know, what will allow them to continue? Because in the interest of seeing them continue, because the last thing we want to see is for them to, you know, fall off the face of the earth once the MOU is occupied and come back with nothing. And then we're put in the bad position of having to say, well, no, even though now they actually have some traction. So I think, I guess what I'm asking is it's not just a matter of having them come back to us to show us where they're at. But so we, I, I, I mean, and I don't know how much or what the board feels about this, but we, we've gone through this enough that we do know, you know, what a complete site plan would look like. And so is that what we're going to be after? Like, is that, is that the metric? Will the site plan be complete? Or will they be allowed one more draft after that? You know, that's what I want to see, not just diligently or anything. Not that I'm saying it would, but something with a little bit more bite to it.
Yeah, go ahead, Bill. I'm sorry.
I, I would just say that whatever we do is going to be a three to four month, um, limit. And, you know, they would, they would, they would have to prove to the town board that we were headed in the right direction. Sitting here right now, I don't know what that looks like, but I, I imagine that I'll be sitting here either at your meeting or on Zoom again in, in three to four months.
Probably.
You, you know, how, how are we making out, guys? Are you guys feeling like we're getting the stiff arm or, or are we making good progress here?
Well, I think having that dialogue be open would definitely help things, uh, help keep some daylight in the room.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, letting the, the room would be important because we have certainly had enough beat over the years with this. And I think that you can sum this up in three words, I believe used by one of our prior presidents, trust but verify.
Yes.
Yeah.
So what I will do, uh, if you guys don't mind meeting on the fourth, I will, um, tell, uh, their counsel, Steve Barshoff, that he needs to make an appearance with you guys and, and discuss, um, the next steps with, um, getting us to complete site plan review.
I think.
That sounds good to me.
Have to spend any gasoline to do it.
He doesn't have to spend any gasoline to do it, no. He can sit home and.
It's still Bill's part.
I don't have a, I'm planning to be doing on June fourth.
Okay, so I'll. Talk to you, Melissa.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, Bill.
You're very welcome.
Yeah, thanks, Bill. Thanks for the update.
So, and, and I'll ta, uh, plan to attend that meeting as well, just so that we're all on the same page.
Okay, great.
If, if that's it.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so we'll talk next week then. Thank you, guys. Take care.
Bill, bye.
You say something, John?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
The next.
Wait for the next installment.
Item on our agenda.
All right, uh, boards, um, if nobody has any other issues to go over, um, I'll, uh, accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Right.
All stay healthy, guys, and, uh, we'll see you next time around.
It's good to see everyone, except you, Brian. Get that video working.
Yeah, it's a little weird.
You like my cat?
Not as much as I, not as much as I like you, Brian.
On that note. Have a good weekend, everybody. Bye-bye.
All right.